Property.
What is this? Somebody's been playing with my thing. Oh, my goodness. Oh, jeez.
Good evening and welcome to the Nurse St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale St. Patrick's Day, March 17th Board Meeting. I apologize for our delay. We were meeting upstairs and a little tardy in getting down here. I'm going to be turning to the Vice Chair to announce who are our Pledge of Allegiance candidates tonight.
Madam Chair, I'm really excited tonight to have some students from Castle Elementary with us. If Emma and Haley Raboin would come forward and Matthew Marah. And they're here with their parents, Andrew and Jill and Michael and Robin. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Castle students. And our Vice Chair Steve is coming down to give you a certificate for your participation this evening. Thank you, Steve. Our first item is approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Hunt and seconded by Anderson. Comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We have an agenda. Our next section is the public comment, and we have nothing this evening. We'll move into the consent agenda, and I will read the items that pertain to the consent agenda this evening. It's fairly extensive. We have minutes of the February 17th business meeting, minutes of the February 19th special meeting, minutes of the February 25th special meeting, minutes of March 10th work-study session, minutes of March 10th closed session, routine personnel, the bid RFB, P, excuse me, calendar, bid awards. And under the bid awards, we have school district portrait package contract for services, severance of teacher and extracurricular assignments, adopt criteria for discontinuation of licensed position. Is there an item on the consent agenda that somebody would like to remove? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. Moved by Livingston.
Second.
Second by Yenner. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We've adopted the consent agenda. We're going to go into reports, and this evening we have Donna here alone. If you'd like to share your report.
Yes, it's actually been a really, like, really slow month at Tartan with transitioning into the last trimester. But at the end, or towards the, actually it was last week, DECA went to state and they actually placed very well. One of the seniors, Alan Richardson, placed third. I forgot what category it was, but he did really well. And then also our BPA students went to state, and over 13 of them qualified for Nationals that are coming up. With this new trimester, we started an internship program, which is where two students every hour will sit in the library and really just kind of help students with their tech problems with our netbooks at school, whether it's through the computers in the library or their own personal devices. They've been trained to, like, help out other students. Our spring sports have just started, and that's actually been going really well. And then our speech team has their last showcase on March 23rd at 6:00 in our cafeteria. And our last big news was our relay was participated in this nationwide online giving thing that lasted for three days, and whoever raised the most money in the three days online, like, was, I don't know what we won, I think we won, like, iPads or something, and we actually won last, like, with the last half hour left, we won. We beat out a whole entire district in Massachusetts and, like, a huge, like, college in Arizona, which is actually really cool to see. And with those numbers, we are now, like, I think it was 20,000 ahead of schedule that we were supposed to be, so we're really ready for relay on May 15th. Yeah.
Questions or comments for Donna? Thank you, Donna.
Yeah.
Our next report section is under Teaching and Learning. We have Dr. Miller going to talk about some ACT testing.
Yeah, so ACT testing, some of the changes here, so we're just really looking at how we're going to accommodate. This is a challenge throughout the state as we're testing all of our juniors this year. Again, this is a required, a requirement now. It used to be optional, and it was easy to accommodate. ACT has a lot of requirements around the testing environment and all of those things, so we're really going to make sure that we have good testing accommodations for those students, and we need to have a late start on April 28th to accommodate for our juniors with the testing requirements. Been working with transportation, our assistant principals at the high school to work out all the details. This has kind of been a challenge, a conversation throughout the school year as everyone is looking at how to make this happen. Some of the dynamics around the testing environment, no bells, no disruptions, a variety of those things are coming into play. So the challenges of trying to have school and what do we do with the kids that aren't testing and all of those things. So we've been working together, working with transportation and putting together a plan, and we're going to move things forward April 28th. And our juniors will be coming in at the regular start time, and then our ninth and 10th graders at Tartan will be coming in around 11:00, 11:15. Still working out those details with transportation. And then at North, it'll be our ninth, 10th, and 12th graders coming in around the half-day marker, again, 11:00, 11:15. It's different at Tartan than North because Tartan's seniors are on a retreat, so it makes it a little easier to accommodate at Tartan just because of the numbers as our seniors are on a retreat there. So those are a few of the dynamics around the testing and the accommodations that we're going to put in place, and we're going to work out the kinks and see how things go. We've been checking with our surrounding districts. Some of them are not having school for the other students, some are. So there's just various dynamics around it with space and monitoring and not leaving the room and a variety of those dynamics. So that's kind of our plan. We're continuing to work through those details, and then we're going to have a strong communication plan once we get things kind of finalized here and work through all of those dynamics.
Questions or comments for Miller? Amy?
I was just wondering, did you say April 28th?
Yes, it's Tuesday.
What is the plan if students are absent, since everyone has to have the option to take that test?
Yeah, we are, I do not know. I don't have all of those details yet. As we're continuing to patch things, Paul Breshear is, we're working on his replacement and all of those dynamics, but we're still working on all the if fans, what do we do and how do we accommodate that? Obviously, we're sending information home about how critical attendance is, but if we have students sick, how are we going to make that up and what are we going to do? There's been ideas when you have some of those smaller numbers, there's places that we can accommodate where, you know, we've used this boardroom before, we've done different things so that we can have an appropriate testing environment for those that are unavailable or sick.
And I think, is it Mounds View that's been doing this for a number of years?
They have, yes. They've been testing all, yep.
And I know I've heard them speak that they have the highest attendance on that day of any other day, but I'm sure there's always still.
There's still always, yep. There always will be some of those pieces.
I think it's a great opportunity for our juniors to take that test, but it does, it's a lot of, there's a lot of logistical things.
Tons. And we're working through it, and we're continuing to, you know, pull things together and, like I said, trying to learn from other districts. We've been connecting with some other schools as well, and we're going to go after it and do a great job and make sure the kids have the best testing environments, critical for a variety of reasons, obviously for their futures and also for us to drive continuous improvement. So that's our goal, and we're going to make it happen, and then we'll kind of learn from it this year and see what we want to do next year, as we really want to also have a productive day for those students that are coming for half the day, too. So those are some pieces that we're working through.
Thank you, Troy. Any other questions? Steve?
Just a quick one. How is our compliance with all the conditions for the testing? How is that monitored?
There's a whole system through that, and again, we have the test monitors that we'll have to have, you know, all of those checklists that they need to follow. So again, we're working through our principals who have all the information, and also Peter Mall and myself will be, again, monitoring all of those specs, so there's a variety of things we must accommodate.
And then is there, are there any contingency plans, for instance, if there's a fire drill or a fire or some sort, something like that, or are you just hoping none of that happens?
There's a long list of what-ifs, and I talked to Cheryl today, again, from North, and she was saying, yes, we need to have a plan for all of those things, because that, those, yeah, those things are critical, and we want to make sure, yeah, we don't want to invalidate any of our tests. So, good point, and those are the things that we continue to learn, learn from other districts around and make sure that we have a plan, and, you know, we have a little bit of time here as we keep working out those details.
Nancy? So, this is free, right?
Yes.
For the first time?
Yes.
And in the past, what was the fee?
I'm not certain.
50 bucks?
Yeah, and we were more reasonable than, yep.
Yep, and you had to go to, yep, she jealous-y, and you had to go to other sites and have a pencil and all that kind of stuff.
Correct. And it used to be, you know, weekends, we were able to accommodate different times and a variety of those spaces, you know, yeah, it was easier to do some of those accommodations.
So this is huge. This is huge that kids are, can take it in their home school, that it's free, that everybody's going to take it. I'm really excited about this. I think it's great. Yes, go ahead.
Me, I took it at, I don't even remember, it was in Roseville, some random little charter school. And it was, like, kind of freaky, and I, not going to lie, it would have been easier if I would have just been able to take it at Tartan, it would have been more comfortable, probably would have done a little bit better. So this is honestly such a great opportunity for the juniors that they have, because $50 was pretty expensive, and I also took the ACT, which was $70.
Right. So I just think this is, this is progress, and I remember, I have three children that are now adults, but I remember my son, who is now a very responsible adult, was a very irresponsible teenager, and I remember him calling me, and he got lost on the way to the test, and he didn't have a pencil, and he didn't have his calculator, and he had stayed all night partying or something, you know, and so it, you know. So this is really huge, that the students don't have to find some unknown place, that they don't have to pay, that, you know, we haven't put up all those barriers for them, you know? So I'm really excited about this.
Patty?
We were also fortunate, I don't know if you recall, Nancy and Teresa were on the board when 3M paid for our kids to take the test. There were several years where they would pay the fee, Donna, before your time, and, but we didn't get 100% of the kids. We got a percentage that we would have liked more kids to take that opportunity. Now they don't have a choice, so it's going to be good.
Troy, one question for me, and that is, does this contain the writing component as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, we're going to go on to the superintendent section report. Ms. Phillips.
Good evening. This evening, we're going to be having a video about our college in the schools program, and it's been a goal of our board to ramp up our rigor the entire decade that I've been here. And last year, we were excited because our district was number two in the state of Minnesota for earning the most college in the schools credits. Our students earned 3,825 credits, or, excuse me, 2,804, and that was number two in the state. This year, in 1314, the last year that we have data, we earned 3,825, so I'm thinking that's some kind of a prize again. And the total tuition savings for our students was $1,774,227. So 50% of our kids graduate with at least one college course, and at North, last year, the tuition value was $876,213. Kids at North took 1,889 University of Minnesota credits, and over at Tartan, 1,936. You beat North by a little bit, Donna, of U of M credits, and you had a tuition value of $898,014. So we are really doing an outstanding job, and when you see this video, you're going to see how much the staff and the students enjoy these experiences.
Parents, too. Parents appreciate that.
And parents, too, yes. The parents really love it.
CIS really gives us the opportunity to experience what a college classroom is like.
You're held much more accountable.
I feel like I'm more prepared than a lot of my peers.
It's definitely more challenging.
The credits are great, but the experience is also really cool.
Equal representation was based on whose plan. CIS, it's technically called concurrent enrollment, where the class is taught in the high school, but it is directed through the University of Minnesota.
I really enjoy the classes and the structure. Going into college, you kind of know more of what to expect.
You had one of two ways you could go with your essay.
These classes are very rigorous. They're identical to the classes they would be taking as freshmen at the University of Minnesota.
Our teachers try to integrate how it is in college, having group discussions or having us bring out our opinions.
I want you to think about the goals that you have for your life.
The teachers are challenging students to do college-level work, so it really just challenges you to work at that, like, higher level.
I mean, they're learning not only the content in my class, they're learning how to learn at a college level.
Last year, students in our district earned almost 4,000 credits, saving them and their families almost $2 million.
We've got kids who are starting college credit-wise mid-sophomore year.
With CIS alone, I'm going to be going in there with 14 credits in a field that I'm looking to major in.
I'm planning on double majoring, so it's going to help me be able to do it in that four-year time span.
A lot of my friends who do PICO have to go all the way there, and it was more convenient to do it here and still get the credits.
It's a challenge, and also you get to learn a lot about yourself.
It's really helped me focus on what I really want to go into.
After I took my CIS intro to lit, I definitely knew I wanted to go in the education field.
It really makes you see that college is that much closer.
For them, it's rewarding to see the improvement that they've made, and for them to leave with greater confidence, feeling like they're well-equipped.
I'm definitely in charge of my own education.
CIS classes have prepared me for my future.
So school board members, be proud. You set the bar for rigor. Our staff have accommodated that, and it's really taken off, and I'm just excited to hear what we're going to have for data next year. Any questions? Yep. Nancy?
So this is a big topic at the legislature this year.
Huge. We're hoping we get more funding for it, Nancy. You think you can work that out for us?
I'm fine, but Greg Nelson said that we spent $180,000 as a district.
We do.
On college in the schools. You know, it's not free. And he's trying, Senator Greg Clausen is from Rosemont, he's trying to get additional help, and it's in the bill, so, going forward, so we'll hope that that passes, you know, because, because that's just a huge amount of money. I mean, it's getting bigger every year.
It's a lot of money, but if 30 kids leave the district, we lose that much. If they go for post-secondary enrollment options to a local college, we lose all their formula money. And so it's really a win for us, too, but we would love to get some funding for it to help. And AP classes are expensive, too. You have a smaller class size, we have quite a few AP classes in both of our high schools. They're expensive, too, but our kids are worth it, and you make a good point. So if you can call a legislator and tell them, we would appreciate the help.
Sure. And the other thing is, it's not just for, you know, the top 5% or whatever. They, all the research shows that when students take a college in the schools class, even if they haven't been, you know, academically at the top, they, they, it has a huge impact on them to be in that quality class with that kind of rigor, and they do better. And Caleb, you're just a good example of that, actually. But anyway, so I'm just so proud of our district for going forward with this college in the schools initiative, and I think Greg Nelson at North High has especially waved the flag for, am I right?
Well, they both are. It's neck and neck. And North started it out, and now Tartan has met the challenge, and they surpassed them this last year. You know, Nancy, you brought up a good point. We spent a day with someone from Harvard and a counselor, and she said, you have programs like Abbott, and you plant the dream for these kids to go to college, but the first time they stumble when they go to college, sometimes there isn't that safety net. So if you can have rigorous programs in high school, and kids can maybe fail even, but they've got that safety net at home to help them, it's really valuable. And the research says those kids then succeed in college because they know, I can do it. I did it at high school, I did college-level work, I can do it. So I'm really proud of our district for moving ahead in this.
Right. One more point I want to make, how good it is for teachers.
Yes.
Right? I mean, don't they go and take all this extra development? I mean, I've heard teachers say to me, this is the best staff development I've ever had is going to the university and being trained in this college in the schools, you know, program.
Same, hear it all the time. So, yeah, the whole program, everyone, and it is true, we, the costs keep going up, more and more kids in there, and with our financial situation, we're always trying to make it a top priority, but as you know, we have a lot of top priorities, so, yeah, phone calls, that would be tremendous, because it would, everything will help.
Good. Thank you. Patty? I'm just going to ask that we put on our learning zone or whatever, those figures of what we save our taxpayers. Yes, absolutely. I think it's a, it'll kind of really be a shout-out to what we're doing for. And I'm going on another TV show, I think it's this Thursday, the Suburban Channel. Again, I went a couple of weeks ago, and I'm going to bring the figures and say them loud and clearly. How's that? Thank you. See ya. Our next item is the 916 report, and I have that honor. I just wanted to announce a couple of exciting things. We have a 622 student of ours that is receiving a scholarship through the 916 Education Foundation, the ALC Scholarship Program, and he's being awarded $300, and so I just think that's great, and it's for excellent performance, which is a great thing, and due to data privacy, I'm not going to announce his name, but that's pretty exciting. The last thing I wanted to say is, in our state organization, the MSBA Journal that came out, there is an article about the new Carner Blue specially, Special Education Design School. That is a great article, talks about the unique features the school offers, and again, that's a collaborative of 13 districts, so we're glad we're a part of that. Moving now into the action items, we, our first is an exciting thing, it's the Acknowledgement of Contributions, and Nancy has that honor this evening.
Okay, thank you. Minnesota Statute 123B.O2 permits school boards to receive, for the benefit of the district, bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. So here is our list of generous donors. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school districts, 622, that the school board accept with appreciation the following contributions and permit their use as designated by the donors. Trader Joe's has donated a case of apples valued at $49.68 for the Oakdale Jump Rope for Heart. Larry S. and Christie N. Brown donated $100 for the Oakdale Winter Bingo Event. Paul Raberry donated $20 for the Oakdale Winter Bingo Event. Dorothy Fees donated $20 for the Oakdale Winter Bingo Event. The estate of Patricia A. Doolin donated $1,000 for the Tartan High School Art Department. An anonymous donor donated $2,000 for the Oakdale Holiday Help for Families. The House of Prayer Church donated multiple knitted hats, mittens, neck warmers, and felt hats valued at $200 to Cowern Elementary. Another anonymous donor donated $1,000 to Richardson Elementary's Field Trips. Teresa Falconbridge donated $42 for Meals on Wheels. Susan Purvis, $50 for Meals on Wheels. Gary Laska, $50 for Meals on Wheels. Emily Putzler, $50 for Cowern Elementary School. Eleanor Niklowski, $150 for Meals on Wheels. J.J. Steenberg, $50 for Meals on Wheels. The Maplewood North Lions, $200 for Meals on Wheels. Walter and Mary, uh-uh, what did I do? Walter and Mary Lindeman, $100 for Meals on Wheels. Cherie Bender, an octane elliptical trainer valued at $500 for the Harmony Learning Center. Home Depot donated a number of items, construction items, for the Harmony Learning Center. Krista Lane Waymeyer, $50 for the Harmony Learning Center Pilot Program. Cherie Bender donated a Vision Fitness Recumbent Exercise Bike valued at $350 for the Next Step Denise Calley's Classroom. And finally, the Ideal Credit Union donated $1,500 for Meals on Wheels. The total fiscal year 2014-15 monetary contributions, $164,870.15. So I'd like to move that we accept the donations with gratitude.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there a second? Moved by Livingston. All those in favor of accepting the donations?
Aye.
I echo Nancy's sentiment and thanking those generous donors. We're going to move now into the business section, and Dr. Anderson has that pleasure. You're going to start us off with the 2014-15 budget revision.
Well, as you recall, at the March 10th work session last week, we went over the various funds and the different revisions in revenues and expenditures that are outlaid on the sheets in front of you tonight. So I would recommend that we approve the listing of those budget revisions to the 2014-2015 budget for all funds listed.
Is there questions or comments for Mr. Anderson? I would just like to add, just for our public viewing, this was an extensive conversation and dialogue that you provided with us with lots of interaction, and so this sort of completes that whole dialogue portion of it. So if I may, looking for a motion in a second to adopt the budget revision.
So moved.
Moved by Hunt. Seconded by Navy. All those in favor of accepting the resolution to adopt the budget revision signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? We've adopted those budget revisions. Thank you, Randy. Now we're going to go into the capital budget.
At the same work session, remember, we went through the proposed 2015-2016 capital budget plan, which includes all of our leases. budget plan, which includes all of our leases, all of the capital equipment and those types of supplies that are allocated to buildings and to district, the alternative facilities budget, health and safety. And there was a complete breakdown there. Again, that is the 2015-2016 budget plan, capital budget plan for next year. And this is the first step in our implementation of our budgets and we will continue to bring things forward to you in other areas, but this is the first step in this 15-16 process. So again, I would recommend to the board that they approve the 2015-2016 capital budget plan.
Thank you, Randy. Is there any comments or questions for Randy? I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the capital budget approval.
So moved.
So moved by Livingston.
Second.
Second by Navy. All those in favor of adopting the resolution as with the attached 15-16 capital budget plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've adopted that budget. Thank you. One more item in that category is our, the topic with the amendment to Valley Crossing Joint Powers Agreement. Patty's going to lead us in that.
Yes. As you are aware, we've been in a partnership with Stillwater and South Washington County Schools in the ownership of the Valley Crossing School. And you know that earlier this year, South Washington County won a bidding process to purchase the school and that purchase will take place in January of 2016 when all the bonds are paid off for that building. Subsequent to that and in addition to that, we've had some inequities with the way we fund that school. And both South Wash and Stillwater pay considerably more for tuition than we do for our students. Granted, they have more students and they pay more for them. So we asked to amend the joint powers agreement and that has been approved by the 916 Board and then now each of our respective boards need to take action on that. And what the changes will do are as follows. Number one, we will have an equitable tuition payment system. So those other two districts are going to pay the same amount that we take in. So the formula, that's the same for all districts, follows the students. And then our operating referendum, which is 900 some dollars per pupil, will go for all three districts. Will give the same amount that we have. Second of all, the plan we have had in place for over 20 years is we declare the number of students from our district that are going to attend 916 by March 1st. And if students don't show up, we still have to pay for them. So the formula follows them plus the levy dollars. We had a $105 bill, a $105,000 bill this year, $105,000 for phantom students. We had at one time 15 students that didn't show up. They didn't attend our district. They went to school somewhere else, but we still had to pay the bill. So with this, amending this joint powers agreement, we will not have to pay that $105,000 for phantom students. And if next school year, there are any phantom students, we won't have a bill. So that's good news for us. The third thing is our capital dollars follow these students. And for this next year, the capital dollars will not follow them. And if there are excess dollars in the capital reserve, we will get dollars back on a prorata basis, depending on how many students we have at the program. So actually, this is all for equity and it's good for us as far as the phantom students. It's good for Stillwater and South Wash as far as the tuition.
Comments or questions for Patty? I would just like to add that, oh, did you have one there?
Just like to jump.
Oh, thank you. I would just like to add that at the 916 Board meeting last month, 916 took action on balancing the revenue with expenditures and so there were some cuts made that were felt by some of those parents and some of the staff. And we used the core value of courage to get through that very difficult budget process, but it's equitable for the three districts and so I want to add that. So we have a resolution to accept the amendment to the Valley Crossing Joint Powers Agreement. Do I have a motion?
No.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Livingston. All those in favor of adopting amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've adopted the amendment. Thank you. We're going to move into Student Services and Corey, you have that pleasure tonight.
Thank you. So tonight's the second reading of this policy on early entrance to kindergarten. And just by brief way of review, districts are required to have a policy to allow the opportunity for early entrance. And you've studied that at the February study session and had a chance to review that at the last board meeting. You know, Task Force here did take the time to review the MDE recommendations on a policy of this nature. We reviewed approximately 10 school districts work in this area and our recommendations in front of you are consistent with those sources. We did also have a review by legal counsel here and had the endorsement of Karen Kipple. So we are, at this point, ready to recommend the approval of the resolution in front of you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second? Moved by Coburn?
Second.
Second by Livingston. Any other comments or questions?
So it's the same comment I have the other times, which is my feedback has been that parents dislike this policy because it makes them feel like they have this opportunity, but the bar is so high that it's not realistic. So just to share it again.
No, and Michelle, I really do appreciate your comments. It's something that we do wrestle with, you know, balancing, making sure we make really good decisions, moving kids forward so we can try to ensure an experience that's valuable for them. So one of the things that is a change to this procedure that's attached to the policy is really working with parents on the front end to help them really have a true understanding of the process itself and what some of the outcomes could be so they can make an informed decision moving into that process. So I can understand it, you know, and yet we've wrestled with that piece. We're trying to do the best we can to ensure that there's a successful experience if kids do meet that criteria. And you're right, it is a high bar and set intentionally to, you know, be high to help us make good experiences for kids happen. So thanks for your input on it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting the policy for early entrance into kindergarten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adopted the policy. We're going to move into the school board section. We have a few items. The first is to set an agenda for our scheduled April 14th work-study session. We've been given some ideas and those include Randy's two and 10-year facility plan with regards to the facilities and budget, followed by Tom Hawley from our Equity Office sharing with staff the Oleus Welcoming Schools and the LGBT update, and a first glimpse at proposed policy revisions that, from MSBA. We're estimating about a two-hour timeframe. Does anyone have any comments or questions about the agenda and the time for that study session? I'm looking for a motion in a second. Moved by Navy.
Second.
Seconded by Livingston. All those in favor of adopting the topics and the agenda for our April 14th study session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item that we have is the Alternative Teacher Profession Pay System Notification Q Comp. And Craig, Keith is going to walk us through that section.
Well, as part of the, as part of that particular plan, we have a memorandum of understanding with our Teachers Association around the structure of how that plan plays out. There's also a background document that we have to submit to MDE that gives more specifics about the plan, but the MOU basically sets it up. So every, even calendar year, so that we have the opportunity to negotiate it, one of the, either the Teacher Association or the district has the opportunity to say, we'd like to do something different with that. I think at this point, through discussions with you, we've come to the conclusion that we would like to have some discussions with the Teacher Association about how this MOU is laid out and whether we can come to some agreement on something different. The date that we would need, normally need to do that was December 1. Because of our budget situation that we've been dealing with over the last several months, we decided to write a memorandum of understanding to suspend that notification until April 1st. So that's why it's here tonight. We would need to give notification by April 1st that we were wishing to do something different. The resolution, the actual bottom part of it, be it resolved, really says we would like to enter in negotiations and talk about alterations to this plan and that you would tell the bargaining team for the district to meet with the bargaining team of the association to try to see if we can come to an agreement on some changes. So that's the essence of it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Keith?
So the understanding is that if the negotiations can't come to an agreement between the two on something that we agree on, that the Q Comp would be gone altogether. Is that correct?
Yeah, essentially, essentially if we don't have the memorandum of understanding agreed upon, we don't have Q Comp. At this point, we're not notifying the state that we're withdrawing from Q Comp. We're saying we believe there needs to be some changes as a district and we'd like to meet and talk about those.
And what is the timeline for that negotiation period? Is there a deadline for that decision to be made?
Well, there's not a hard firm deadline. We've talked to MDE about that, but I mean, I think there is a practical deadline at some point in time where we need to know what we're doing next year in terms of, right now, we have two additional days at the start of the school year. Do we have those or don't we? And then the other parts of the plan. So there's not a definite date, but you know, it probably would need to happen sometime, you know, soon to be able to plan for it. And the longer it goes, the less we'll be able to plan. But I think we're, we met initially today to talk a little bit about the preliminaries of it. And so we'll, you know, we'll have to work our way through that in terms of what our timeline is, but that's kind of what we're suggesting.
So as far as our budget goes, because we were contingent, it's another, what, 6.8 IFT? So are we, are we cutting that in the assumption that we, because isn't staffing, doesn't staffing go out in April or end of March?
Yes, we are working through all of that at this time. We're trying to get creative around some of these pieces, but ultimately it would be an additional 6.8 IFT. Been working closely with Corey and Randy and trying to see how that plays out. Talked to Keith again today. Staffing is extremely tight, as you are aware, and so yeah, we're still working through that by notifications going out to teach, to our licensed staff on March 26th.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
And both parties have a vested interest in seeing a successful conclusion to negotiations. I mean, this is a process that both parties are entering into with an idea that there can be a successful conclusion to this.
I think that's, that would be accurate. I think both parties are interested in kind of, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of issues that can be resolved, I think, and we'll work, you know, work toward it. You know, obviously, it won't be, you know, it probably won't be a one-hour meeting. So, you know, we will have to talk about it and come up with different alternative ideas. But I think, my sense of it is that both parties are willing and interested to resolve the issue.
Other questions or comments for Keith? I have one, Keith. Do we have any dates currently set or in the process of being set to move this forward?
We do have, we actually met initially today because we had got notification a week or so ago that the, that the Teacher Association was interested in getting negotiations started. So we actually did meet today to talk a little bit about all negotiations, this included. We have another, we had another meeting set for Thursday, but I think there's a lot of things that we have to research at that point. Some of those involve you folks in terms of some of that. So we'll probably be asking in the future to set aside a meeting to talk more specifically with you.
Anything else? Well, we have a resolution to, and I think we need a motion in a second. And I'll read the resolution since it is lengthy. Be it resolved by the School Board of 622, that it approves the notification of North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale Education Association, that the district discontinues and terminates the current ATTPS memorandum of agreement and directs its bargaining team to enter in negotiations with NSP MoEA with the intent of drafting a new agreement that both parties can approve. If an agreement cannot be reached, the district will notify the Minnesota Department of Education that is withdrawing from the Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System Q Comp Plan. Is there a motion? Moved by Coburn? Second by Navy? Yeah, no, my apologies. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the resolution as red, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
One more item for the school board, and that is to set a special meeting for the superintendent contract. We discussed in our reflection session, we had some dialogue over the process and we've targeted date. I'm looking to see if the board would like to pursue this and if so, I need a motion in a second.
I move that we set a special meeting to consider the superintendent contract.
Okay, so we have a motion from Hunt and a second by Anderson. Comments, questions?
I just want to clarify, March 30th, 5:00 p.m., is that?
Yes, did I misspeak? My apologies.
No, I don't think you mentioned the date.
Oh, my apologies.
I just wanted to clarify.
For March 30th, 5:00 p.m. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of setting the special meeting for the superintendent contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that completes our business. Just a reminder for our audience and for ourselves that future board meeting dates would be April 14th. We have a work-study session beginning at 4:30 p.m. in the conference room 202. On April 28th is our formal business meeting at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom and of course, our March 30th special meeting that we've set. We now are going to open for, open forum for our board comments and dialogue. And Caleb, do you want to start and share anything that may, you may have that you'd like to share with the rest of the board?
Well, I am glad to be back. Ed O. I'm glad to be back and involved with board activities and I just appreciate everybody's nice consideration and for thinking of me during the car accident and my stay in the hospital, but thankfully, my kids are good and healthy and I'm healthy and so I'm glad to be back and involved, so.
We're glad to be back too.
Thank you.
Nancy?
I just want to give a shout out to former board chair Dick Sepala. Dick, one wave, wave. Anyone who has served on the school board knows how your family has to give you up for hours and hours and hours. And just in this past month, how many hours have we put in on the school board business in our superintendent search process, for example? So, and Dick put in years and years. How many years, Mr. Sepala?
Eight years.
Eight years. And so thanks for your public service.
Mr. Wall?
Yeah. Thank you, Nancy. Steve?
I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the principal and the staff at Castle Elementary who greeted me on the spur of the moment and gave me a little tour of the building and found the students for us for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. The one thing that always strikes me is the older I get, the smaller those elementary schools look. But I was, I was really impressed that the kids looked happy and they looked engaged and I thought it reflected very well in our school district.
Thrilled to be here too.
Thank you, Steve. I thank you for taking on that task. Michelle? Okay, Becky? Amy?
I just wanted to take a minute to mention that when we approved our consent agenda today, one of the items in the routine personnel was the retirement of Cowern's principal, Sony Serpac. And...
Sonia Serpac and I've been very involved there and wow, who thought I'd cry about this? I just want to say hats off and job well done.
We know you mean way more, Amy, and we thank you for those comments. I would just like to thank the staff for their preparation, all the materials for all of the meetings that we've had this week. I also wanted to just mention that we have, you know, 622 is very proud, we have two candidates that are finalist in the Minnesota Teacher of the Year and they are Julie Swanson and Steve Dobrask and elementary and secondary. So, again, we thank the teachers for all they do and for acknowledging that these two in particular. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that we have a spring break around the corner and we wish you all a safe and happy spring break and lastly, just a special thank you to my colleagues and as you saw on the consent agenda, we've met often, we've met long, we've showed courageousness and dedication and the student staff, thank you for the work you've done and I thank you. So, with that, I need a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Livingston?
Second.
Second by Anderson? All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Meetings adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible]